So taking a look at things like, is it most important to me to remain in a particular building or with a particular program? Is it most important, you know, for instance, that they remain at the same grade level as we're looking for movement? Because the staff at Hugo is going to be transit, currently at Hugo Elementary is going to be transitioning. There's going to be significant movement at Odenka as well. And as we see all of that, and then inclusive of boundary changes, we know that there's really going to be an impact at all of our sites. And so that's why we felt that it was necessary to make sure that we're seeking input and feedback from all of our teachers regardless of building, not just those that will be affected most significantly. So we'll certainly be seeking that. We're going to be gathering that before we break for winter break. And then we'll be incorporating that into our staffing process as we move into the spring. We also know, before we can finalize some of that elementary staffing, we're going to need to see a resolution with our boundary process. And so we know that that will push things back a little bit. But, you know, we really want to make sure that there's opportunities for staff members to connect with the, with their staff groups and buildings in preparation for the 2223 year at the end of our, at the end of spring here too, so that they can kind of understand where they're heading, you know, start to get excited about the comments this year. So that what we're looking at is going to be a big change. And we know that there will be, you know, big changes for those elementary staff members.
And when you said it, it just blew over me. But I'm wondering, with all the big changes between new schools and boundaries and class sizes up and down, what's the impact on the proposed multi-grade classrooms that you talked about?
So as we look at that, there will very likely be an impact there. And this gives us an opportunity to, as we're kind of pressing reset a little bit, for people to be aware of the kinds of programming, or things that may be a little bit different about each of our sites. So you think about kind of the things that have always existed in our, in our system, you know, we've got one magnet school in terms of Matoska there. We also know that we're not looking to open that new building without some programmatic changes. So there's a real push in terms of project-based learning there. And that's not exclusive to the new school opening, but we do think that where we're seeing some of those pushes for project-based learning, we'll also be exploring more opportunities for multi-aging, not just in that building. Because that push towards project-based learning, as I said, it's not exclusive to the new school. We're also going to be seeing where else can we be pushing that? And we've had a lot of our staffs engaged in that professional development and excited about what's coming down the line. So we're going to take the opportunity to kind of put together a bio for each of those buildings, so the teachers understand what kind of opportunities may or may not be available there, so that they know kind of eyes wide open, what they're, what they're looking at. So if there's sites where we believe that there's going to be more of those opportunities for multi-aging, you know, project-based learning on an accelerated front, that staff will be aware of those and provide a feedback and input.
I guess I'm speaking, not just as a staff member who changed subject matters in schools, whatever, as life changed, but also I was at two PTA meetings last week. I was at ACAB and also Otter. And the parents are really wondering, as boundaries change, and there's a lot of movement at the north end and growth, and new buildings and things like that, and that's always positive. But they want to know, do they have a choice? And how, and will they know what that school is going to offer? I mean, call it multi, call it split grade, I mean, we've had that for years, different places, because of the exigencies of enrollment. And I think one of my kids had a one-two that was a split. And it has its pluses and its minuses. And parents want to make a choice. So they're wondering, if I'm in an area other than Matoska, which is a destination school, or, and we still have the special core at Lincoln, right? So there's two destination schools, but do other people also have a choice? If the school that they're assigned to has a big change, like multi-grade classrooms?
Yeah, I think we see a lot of that trace already, because we have, we've taken a very open approach in terms of district transfers, school district, I think. Where that, where that does sometimes differ though, from our magnet programs, is the ability to obtain a blessing. So in those situations, that is a distinction there. But yeah, I think there will continue to be a good deal of flexibility.
And really where we've seen parents be hesitant, once they're able to work with the teachers and the principals, I think a lot of those concerns have been alleviated, because the success of that programming is the principal and teacher working through it. And project-based learning and multi-aging that we've done have been led by the principals. They're the ones that pushed to move it forward and move those initiatives forward. We didn't need to move that forward this year in any of our buildings. And so that work, they're excited about, so.
I think project-based learning has been a big star in a lot of people's curriculum. So that's not new, it's just how much more that, what you're going to center around it. But I think parents just wonder how much choice they have, and, and when things are unveiled, so to speak, they'll have a little time to think about it. So that was just questions I heard from several people at both major schools, and I said, I'll ask, will I ask?
Thank you, Dr. Nemester. Other questions or comments? Do you guys have anything else that you'd like to?
Just wanted to make sure that those are on the table, so people just understood where we're heading.
All right. Thank you both very much. Appreciate the, appreciate the update. We'll now move to our second agenda item, second discussion item, which is the attendance boundary public input process. Shaw.
Thank you, Chair Wollum, members of the board. Okay. So in 2018, we completed several demographic studies, and that helped inform our long-term enrollment projections, as well as our facilities plan. In fact, that was an important element in the 2018 bond referendum. And during those presentations, one thing we were clear about was that we would have to be looking at enrollment boundaries as time moves on, especially as we open a new elementary school and start to develop some consistency in programming at our other schools. That we would need to look at elementary boundaries across the district as well as middle school. So central middle school is projected to have enrollment that will exceed the capacity of their current building, even with District Center, and Sunrise Park moving to a new location in the south end of town. And so that much we knew we would be doing. We've been working with Teamworks International. That's a local Minnesota company that we've worked with in the past. You remember that from the demographic studies. And in March of 2021, they presented to the board about the process for drawing our attendance boundaries. So that, part of that process was that we would form a, we would form a design team to get the process started, to start studying the research, and making some conclusions about how we could create the basis of enrollment design. The next step would be to bring in stakeholders and let them ask questions, identify strengths, and inform the design, and then go back to the drawing board once the stakeholders have weighed in. So we're at that point now. So our design team started meeting in the spring, throughout the summer, and into the fall, and now have developed many different designs. And one really that, that is kind of developed out of a combination of many designs. But it's not a, it's not a finished product. What we know is when stakeholders have a chance to weigh into this, they're going to have a different set of eyes, is going to draw a lot of new ideas to the plan. So we suspect that that plan will change, perhaps significantly, over the next few weeks. The committee, principals have been recruiting people to serve on the committee. The committee will start working on December 2nd. We'll have one committee that will be divided into two groups, recognizing that the northern elementary schools in our community and the southern elementary schools have different geographical considerations, in that it might be just more functional to have schools that are more closely aligned geographically to have that conversation. That's hard to read, but it's just a agenda for the evening, that the committee will look at the process, they'll look at what our goals were, and then they'll inform the This is probably the better view. Want to just kind of walk through this. So you can, if you follow this chart, you see stakeholder voice, that's the input team. So the input team will be made up of, again, northern committee and southern committee. They'll provide feedback to the, to the design team, and then the design team will take that feedback and make changes to the plan based on the feedback that they receive. The general public will have a significant opportunity to gain feedback too. So a lot of those on the committee, which is made up of parents and staff members. Then everything that we present to the public on December 2nd, or to the, excuse me, the committee on December 2nd, will be available on our website. And it'll really be based, the information we'll be looking for is really based on this, just what are the strengths that you see, what are the concerns that you see, and then what recommendations do you have? It's not a complex feedback group, but it should be effective. Again, then we'll go back to the design team, they'll make the changes, bring that to the committee again on December 15th, get more feedback from the committee, and again, update the webpage, so that what the committee is seeing is what everyone in the public will have an opportunity to see and provide feedback on. That will go to the design team again, and then what comes out of that will be our recommendations to the board.
Thanks.
So that will then go to the board for the January work session, get feedback from the board, and presumably then be approved at the February order.
Questions? Dr. Nemester.
Kind of one more thing, kind of feel like going over. I also wonder of the impact, I mean, we've had our online school this year, and that had its own special startup, and people that really liked that style, that felt safer in that style. And I'm wondering how we're working that. I know last year, the state gave people a whole lot of dispensation to continue. And I'm wondering, if you have a crystal ball, how that will be impacted? Or how that will impact choices?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. And so right now, we'd only be rolling the crystal ball. And, and so there's a good chance we'll still have distance learning academy next year. We've been approved by the state to have distance learning academy. So I think as long as we have folks interested, that that would, we'd continue that.
Do we have a certain size that's optimal or required?
Yeah, I'd say that we have a certain size, you know, unique kind of critical mass for it to make sense, both for the district, but also for families, because there needs to be enough substance to the programming there. And so I think what we really probably be looking at, we want to make sure that we were able to have, if we're thinking about K5, we'd want to be able to have at least three sections, that we were only multi-aging once, in theory, in each of those, so we have a K1, a 2, 3, and a 4, 5, for instance. And that feels like it would probably be the bare minimum. What we'd really love to see though, would be the continuation of being able to really offer two sections at each grade level, because it's really powerful for the, for teachers to be able to collaborate, and for, you know, for that environment to feel more like a school. So that would be ideal, but I think we'd be looking at it and considering it at as low an enrollment as a three-section concept there. But I think it'd be hard to pull off a little bit.
And we only received approval for our high school for a year. That was a provisional approval, so given by the state for our school district pandemic, so.
So is the elementary under that umbrella then?
No, the elementary, we got full approval. Full approval, so we're a K5 comprehensive program. And then freshman memory done for middle school.
So I, I believe this year we can, you know, we, we have that, but then I think for all secondary, I do think it is, that it's only the, well, it's a tad more of all that we can, we need to revisit that, I think, for the middle school piece, because that, I'm not sure if it falls with elementary or the secondary for the application.
So it feels like a long time ago. I know, we got approved for a supplemental for middle school, which is not the same as having a comprehensive program. So we absolutely approved K5 for a comprehensive program, so that, you know, we're in a school, we can do it.
And six, it's not viable.
Mm-hmm. And six, eight is a supplemental program. And so to offer a full program where students can be full-time in that, we are going provisional for middle school and for high school for both of them.
Lots of things to jump on.
Yes.
Other questions, comments?
When you say significant time for community feedback, what are we looking at providing the community for feedback on?
Well, time-wise, it'll be, we'll be encouraging people to be quick on it, because we'll have the December 2nd meeting, the design team will take that feedback and make adjustments to it. And that involves some, that takes some time, because you're studying those options. Sometimes recommendations require you to spend a little time with the data to figure out what that change would mean. So I'm not exactly sure how quick that is. It'll need to be fairly quick, but within a few days of that December 2nd meeting, we'll need feedback. And then we'll put together the adjustments and come back with the committee on December 15th.
There'd be an opportunity after that December 15th meeting as well, for, for input before the final.
Before January?
Yeah, the bottom month before we bring it back to the board.
Other, Ms. Boyd?
So are we talking like a survey, or what kind of input are we talking about here?
No, it'll, it'll be similar, it'll be a Google form, and it'll essentially be this. What strengths do you see in the plan? What concerns do you have about the plan? And what ideas do you have to improve?
So then everyone's going to be directed to the website to look at the plan, and then fill out the Google form from there.
Yeah.
Dr. Nemester?
And I was asked questions by parents at Otter who particularly wanted input, and called Dr. Casper Chicksaw, because you were the top of the food chain, and that's where it would start. Maybe Rachel would send them on.
Sure.
They should go. Because they really didn't know what they really wanted to be. So if there's a, maybe you've got a bullet set to go out to every elementary parent, giving them explicit instructions to do this if they're interested, they'd be less likely to say, I missed it, because then they said, boy, I hope it's not in the digital backpack. I don't always look at that.
Yeah, well, we're launching it now next week, so it hasn't been launched yet, so.
But it will be directed specifically.
Yeah. Marissa is nodding her head down there, she's got the communication.
I think sometimes there's so many things together that it's hard to focus on.
Yep.
And can it be searched? Because somebody said, I've been searching it on the web, and I can't find it. What would they search? I said, look at instructions, and progress.
It will be available when it's launched, but they're right that they don't see it yet, because it's not there yet.
They have anxiety now.
Other questions, comments?
One thing we will review with the team is, kind of what is our current reality, then what are our desired results? And what are the things, what are the, the nots? So what's the unacceptable means of achieving these results? And so as we go through, we, we know that we have attendance, we have enrollment, projected enrollment growth, we have new elementary schools, we have the middle school situation that I mentioned earlier. And we know that we want a sustainable plan, we want to reduce walk, or we want to increase walking distance, so more students can access their school easily. We want to reduce complexities of transportation. We want to make sure that we're adjusting to how the demographics of our enrollment have changed. The last time we adjusted boundaries was 2010, and so things have changed, you know, here like since 2010. And so we want to make sure we're studying what our community looks like, and how do we make adjustments to those boundaries. What we don't want to do is violate maybe policies or laws. We, we don't want special interests to drive the design over the needs of the district. We don't want personal impact statements or conjecture to be what drives any of these decisions. And so we have to be really careful, because there will be a lot of emotion that comes out with attendance boundaries, so how do we make sure that we're looking at research, and we're making the best designs for the district long-term? We don't want to be back here in a few years.
Ms. Boyd?
I know I've asked this question before, but because that new school is right off of 61, and I'm assuming that we are going to have to, the areas across 61 are going to potentially go to the new school, which means you have to cross that. Do we have agreements with the city on how that's going to look, where the crossing places are going to be for, for students who could walk? I mean, potentially there's neighborhoods right there that are really, really close, but you have to cross that, you know, really busy street.
Pretty much.
Another stop right there.
Yeah, our expectation would be that all those students would be bused across either 61. We wouldn't expect any student to cross that at the school entrance. However, there will be a crosswalk at 152nd Street and 61, which is where the new entrance to the school will be. And that will, that's being designed.
It'll be a full intersection, full controlled intersection there.
Because it's walkable, there's a, there's that bike, there's the trail there, but you have to get across 61 first in order of access.
So that's like right by that big oak tree, that's right around there is where that intersection would be, there would be a stoplight. 152nd, just north of.
Right for the post office.
Yeah.
But we assume everybody on the other side is going to get bused, even if they're, and there's a community, there's a neighborhood like right there.
If they're on the east side of 61, yeah, we have that assumption that we'll be busing everyone across 61. We wouldn't expect anyone to walk across it.
We're able to designate hazardous crossings and highways, state highways like that are typically considered hazardous crossings, so typically love.
Thank you.
Dr. Nemester?
I think that each school seems to have its own specialty or identity, and that they really stress, whether it's environment, or prairie, or STEM, or whatever. Are we still looking at that, being forward to that school?
Yeah, yeah, this process won't make any changes to programming at any particular school.
Other questions? Ms. Thompson?
You said increase walking distance, what do you decrease?
Increase the walkability to the school.
Okay, walkability, but not the distance that kids.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's a better, better choice of walkability.
Okay.
For people close to the school.
All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Shaw? You have anything?
Nothing else for me.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the update, and we'll move to our next discussion item. B3 is the 2021-22 revised and 2022-23 preliminary budget timelines. Shaw? Ms. Johnson?
All right, yeah, thank you, Director. Finance, Andy Johnson is joining me for this, and this is the time of year where we start having some pretty serious budget conversations at school board meetings. In the next several months, we'll be full of budget conversations. Okay, we'll start here, or I just don't get a good angle of that, sorry to say. This is a budget diagram we've seen many times, and it's the cycle of the annual budget for the school district, well, all school districts for the most part. And you, the budget that we're currently operating under was passed as the preliminary budget last June. There's a lot we don't know in June, when we pass a preliminary budget, like what is our enrollment, first of all. And last year was a particularly challenging time to project enrollment with the impact of COVID. And we know that COVID has, has had a significant impact, not only in our enrollment, but at our enrollment of public schools across the state. So as we enter the school year, in the fall or in the summer, we start the audit process, and it goes throughout the fall. In September, we bring the preliminary tax levy to the school board. And then in November and December is when our audit starts to take shape, and we bring that to the school board. Sometimes in November, depending on how quickly the audit can, can be completed, but last year and this year, it will be, well, both years will be December. That's also when we have the truth in taxation. So when we have our enrollment pretty well solidified, and we know by December where we're at enrollment-wise for sure, and we have the results of the audit, we're able to bring a much more, more revised budget to the board. And so we'll be bringing that in January, for the January work session, yeah, for approval in February. And then we start, also at the same time, start the process of projecting the next budget cycle. So that process will begin, we'll get a first sneak peek at it in June and start, start that process. Enrollment is the, is the, enrollment is the, is the fact that that maybe most significantly impacts our budget, as we're based on per pupil funding, for our general fund, enrollment's a big critical piece of it. Like I said, in June, when we pass the preliminary budget, we don't know what that enrollment number is going to be. And so we have to make assumptions. And if you look at this chart, that black dotted line is our projected enrollment pre-COVID. So we were on a pretty solid increasing, gradual and really a manageable increasing number for enrollment, as we projected out. The COVID impacted us significantly, as it did schools across the state, public schools across the state. And so our enrollment projections did materialize for 2021 school year, and, and then the enrollment projections for 21, for 21-22 as well. And we, we felt like we were projecting somewhat conservatively, but we really, as we, as we think about June, we were in a better place with the pandemic, and then late summer, it started to really boil up again. And so our actual enrollment is the orange line. So that gap between projected and actual is the budget challenge that will be happening this year. Questions on enrollment, on cycle, enrollment? Andy will go through our timeline and process here.
Are there any questions around enrollment or cycle?
Sorry, I'm asking another one. I looked at this when I was home a couple times, and I didn't quite understand, as we look through the preliminary budget and the enrollment estimates in there, if we look at this year, the preliminary budget was based on thinking we might have 595 students, and we're about 200 shy of that, if I understand that correctly. So we know we're short. Then, then for next year, we're already estimating 87-23, which is even bigger.
Yeah, that was our projection last year. So really, if you look at the orange line below the 87-23, 83-82, is the number we are currently using for 22-23 budget.
So which one? 83, the bottom one?
Yeah.
Which is, so we've already adjusted it, even though we aren't even in that year yet.
Right, that's what we're projecting for next year. So I think, and maybe, and we think that's conservative, but it may be hopeful. And so as we're moving forward, we just think we're taking a more serious dose of conservatism around how our students will return.
I just wondered.
The return is going to be slower than the exit.
Okay. Originally, we, we were more optimistic about the return of students who went to the non-public schools, and we didn't see that materialize this year, so that's part of the reason we thought it was prudent to dial that back.
Is that mainly elementary level?
It's really across the board.
Is it a total?
Yeah.
Well, I just wondered if the continued gap between the preliminary and the revised and when we hit the point where we revised the revision or whatever.
Other questions around enrollment or the process? Please continue.
So then talking about communication timeline going forward, so as Tim had mentioned, next month, we will bring the FY 2021 audit to the school board for approval. And then at the January work session, we'll present the fiscal 21, 22 revised budget. So once we have those two items kind of solidified, then we'll be able to start identifying what our budget adjustment targets may be. So starting in January and February, we will be doing budget presentations at staff meetings, similar to what we did last year, and then prepare the proposed budget adjustments for the following school year. Then in February, the regular board meeting, we will approve the revised budget. And then at the work session, we will present what we would propose for our budget adjustments for the 22, 23 school year. In March, we would approve those. And then our work is to work on developing that preliminary budget then for the 22, 23 school year, which would be presented to the school board in May and then passed for approval at the June regular board meeting. Any questions on the timeline?
Questions on the timeline? Ms. Boyd?
Is the audit complete now?
Just about. Not ready to put numbers out, but we're really, really close, yeah.
Please continue.
Good.
That's all we have. Questions, any further questions regarding the budget timeline or budget, anything to do with the budget? Okay, thank you guys very much, really appreciate it. We'll now move to our next agenda item, which is the update on the naming process for the new elementary school.
Thanks, Mr. Schmidt.
Over the last several months, I've had the opportunity to work with a really terrific facilitator, committee facilitator, Principal Schmidt, who letter elementary, who letter element, expertly letter elementary school naming committee. So hats off to Dan for his work with that and to the folks who served in that committee. It was a fun process to go through, exciting process, and Principal Schmidt will guide us through, oh, no, wait, Dan will unveil the new name tonight.
Yeah, looks like it. Thank you Board Chair Mullin, school board members, superintendent cabinet members. It's been a great venture here trying to come up with a name for a new school. It's an exciting opportunity, obviously, in the district. You can see that there's an agenda, I don't know if that comes up on the slides, but we're just going to go over a few things tonight in regards to that. And I'm going to take a lot of time really just to talk more about the background and where, where we were and where we have come to get to this point. And then with the unveiling of the name, we'll talk about the reasoning behind that at that point. So basically, we started back in mid-'00s and that's when we really started to call out for committee members for the naming committee. It was great to get people involved and they were excited to be a part of that naming committee and we solidified that committee around early September. And then at that point, they committed to three meetings, September 16th, October 14th, and October 28th. So that was the kind of commitment that they had. We were so fortunate that we could find this place out at Hugo, at Rice Lake Center, and that worked out just perfect for everyone just to be out there and brainstorm on things. In the meantime, starting in early September through October 13th, we had a public call for names coming in and it was really fun to see all the different names come through on the survey. We had over 80 names that in the end were submitted. So we'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later on. So then the committee had to roll up their sleeves and they had to kind of get the work done. And so what we did is the first meeting, we just kind of started through our introductions, get to know our roles in the committee and, and our position and why we're interested in the committee. Then we kept going over the school board naming policy to make sure we understood that we're meeting that criteria too. And then we went and took time to understand and study the strategic plan for the district as well, you know, the mission statement, objectives and so forth. And then the principals from Hugo and Alika, they took time to present the building strategic plan, mission statement, objective. Then we took some time to really dig into the design of the school and why, why the design criteria were in place and the project commitments that were in place for that, and then studied the renderings of the, of the project. Then we took time to really look through the key landmarks and the community aspects around the property and everything, as well as the Hugo history. And at this point, I really wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Wall because he invited Cynthia Schoenover from the Hugo Historical Society and she came in and did a wonderful job, just giving an outline of European descendants who had, had an impact in the area as well as the indigenous people that had an impact in the area. So that was a great history lesson, to be honest. Then we had to roll up our sleeves and really start to dig, dig into these eight names. And so categorized them first. And there were seven categories. There was names that were based on an individual, names based on geography, on the environment or nature, on the historical aspect of the area, cultural, and then the civic and role. And then you always have that fun area, the miscellaneous area. So those I get a little chuckled out, some people had some fun with. But then also there was a few names that we just didn't know where to fit in those other categories. But then we took time as naming committee to just kind of go back and forth between large group and small group. We started to really think deeper about the names and really kind of look at the strengths and were there any concerns? That really came up with some of the names. And it kind of was a really deep, healthy discussion. I'm so proud of the committee for what they, for the ownership that they took into that. And so we went from 80 names and we went to 48, then we went to nine, and then we went to three. And the consensus for sure was in the three. That's where we're at. But the struggle was that we were evenly balanced on the three, right? And then we were at the end of our three meetings on top of that. So what the next step was that we decided, you know what, let's pass the buck. Let's move it on to the assistant or to the superintendent and the cabinet and see what they can come up with. So, but they spent a couple of weeks and they really deep brainstorming the, the three different names and the various aspects of each of them. And that's where we're at tonight is that we, we had a final recommendation. So we'd like to unveil the recommendation of the new school, which is.
Can we read it on?
North Star Elementary School. North Star Elementary School. And the reason why we have North Star is for several reasons. One, it's viewed as a positive name that mirrors the location in our school district. It is a neutral name in that it's not associated with a person or a historical event. And scientifically, it's an orienting star and because of this, the students and staff can have a lot of fun with this aspect. Also, it tends to be viewed as inspirational, uplifting, has a lot of potential, center of the universe. It connects to nature, which then also connects to the design of the school. Minnesota is all, obviously known as the North Star State. And then, this is a, this is a classic and this was his discovery along with his research. The North Star, also known as Polaris, is known as Little Bear. So you got an elementary school known as Little Bear in White Bear Lake School District. Love a nap. And it marks the way due north and is used to determine the cardinal directions for navigation. A few other little key points. The North Star is known for holding nearly still in the sky while the entire northern sky moves around in it. And because it's located nearly at the North Celestial Pole, the point in which the entire northern sky turns, we find that the North Star uses the Big Dipper, which is also known as the Great Bear. So, which points directly at the North Star. So the Big Dipper, like the great big hour hand, goes in a full circle around the North Star in one day. And the North Star marks the center of nature's grandest celestial clock. So another little interesting aspect is when slavery existed in the United States, people escaping slavery counted on the Big Dipper to show them the North Star lighting their way to the free states and to Canada. And then the indigenous meaning around the North Star means that it's at the center of all the stars seen from the northern hemisphere and because of this, it's considered to be very important. And Besuwee, our educational equity specialist, she shared that with us, but also with some caution. She said, this may not apply to all tribes or clans within the tribes. So there's a lot of meat behind this name and there's so much potential with this name, especially in an elementary school setting. So that's why there's a little bit of excitement in regards to this name recognition having been presented to you tonight as a school board. So that's what we have to share and if you have any comments or questions, we're happy to listen to you.
Comments or questions?
Go ahead.
Me.
Can you see the North Star from there?
I hope there's not that much light pollution that we can.
There's no big trees except for the big oak. It's very open.
So the plan will be for the, for you to act on this at the December meeting. So we're not taking action tonight, but this is the, this was the big reveal.
It's a good, it's a good name and yes, you should be able to see the North Star despite, unless that's smudged from Canada's town here. I can name a lot of the stars, but the North Star, you can almost almost see them.
School E makes school face was another compelling name.
I was kind of hoping for Papa. But that's probably attitude.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Thompson?
I just want to say thank you. What a great presentation, all the work that was done on this. It's fantastic, I love the name. It made me happy when I heard it, so there must be something to that. Do we know, and obviously we don't need the name, who was, like, do we tell the person who came, who suggested the name? Do they get any little email from us saying, hey? After we presented at the main board meeting probably, or, I mean, now it's out, I mean, people will probably start hearing about it.
That's a really good idea.
Was it an adult or was it a student or? Because I know students presented names to us too, correct?
Yeah, I think this one was an adult.
Okay.
Thank you, Pastor Justin.
Well, thanks for all the work. It's exciting.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you all very much. Really appreciate your efforts and appreciate the name. I'm looking forward to supporting it on, in December.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else that needs, do you have anything? So before I ask for a motion to adjourn, obviously I think that this is the shortest work-study session we probably have ever had, so appreciate that. I just want to, I know that this is Thanksgiving week and I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy the week and hopefully you're eating lots of turkey or whatever you decide to eat. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.